Thank you for your patience. We're ready to get started. Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer and the Manhattan Borough President. I want to thank Chair Roberts and members of the Board for this opportunity. Once again, I'm here to ask that you fully and fairly weigh the plight of rent stabilized tenants who have over the past decades absorbed year after year of rent increases. And as you know, we're losing affordable, regulated housing. I understand that this year, in light of the two previous orders providing a zero increase in one-year stabilized leases, that the owners and their representatives are demanding rent increases based on the data contained in the price index operating costs, indicating that some operating costs have risen. I urge you not to use that factor to revert to the prior practice of allowing rents to increase beyond affordability just to enhance landlords' profits. This body imposed for decades rent increases despite data showing that none was necessary to ensure profitability for the owners. The last two RGB orders granted tenants some reprieve, and we thank you. Those orders were not sufficient, however, to stem the loss of housing. Rents continued to increase. According to the Furman Center at NYU, median gross rent in Manhattan has increased almost 28 percent from 2005 to 2015. On the other hand, despite the claims of significant cost increases, owners' net operating income continued to increase. Simply put, landlords are still making profit. I believe that the one-year renewal rent freezes in 2015 and 2016 orders, while welcome, were simply not sufficient to rectify the imbalance and spiraling rents that resulted from the overcompensation of owners. Those increases consistently tip the balance of the income expense ratio in favor of owners. Two years without increases for one-year renewals could not begin to make up for the imbalance in the past. While the data issued by the Board this year reveals that the owners' overcompensation was so great that even with an increase in expenses and zero one-year increases, profits continue. We're all aware that rents rising are rising despite what this Board determines through vacancies, MCIs, and individual improvements. These increases impact all rent stabilized housing, particularly in Manhattan. We've walked you through in the past how with two lease renewals and a couple of MCIs, a typical stabilized apartment rent increased by 31 percent in the period from 2010 to 2014. And that hurts families who were trying to deal with their own economic stresses. As the Board is already aware from their own reports, in 2016, it was compiled by the Board, the supply of stabilized housing continues to shrink. In 2016 alone in Manhattan, 2,522 units of stabilized housing were lost to vacancy decontrol, and over the last decade, we lost 150,000 units of rent regulated. Those deregulations represent units where the rents were already at a level high enough so that vacancy and other increases placed it over the deregulation rent limit. While the lease increases that your predecessor Board's imposed on tenants over the years may not have seemed high enough to cause the loss of homes, they played a crucial part in the climb of stabilized rents and the twin crises that the city is now facing of homelessness and the lack of affordable housing. So I urge you to keep in sight the purpose of the Board and the purpose of the law itself, which is to recognize the need for balance and protection of affordable housing. The Board data shows that stabilized tenants have a median rent-to-income ratio of more than 36 percent. The data shows that nearly 36 percent of them pay more than 50 percent of their income in rent. This is not a percentage that is sustainable for a long time, and it leaves families in danger of homelessness. Add to this the scenario of the tremendous incentive, particularly in Manhattan, that owners have to obtain a vacancy through whatever means necessary. Tenants cannot safely absorb additional increases. A 4 percent increase may not seem excessive, but any increase in the permanent base rent can make a huge difference to many families. I urge this Board not to push tenants closer to the loss of their homes. I do not believe that any rent increase are justified right now in light of current rent levels and tenant hardships. If you increase anything at all, make it extremely low. I do commend the Board for keeping SRO rents at the same level for another year. Otherwise, Anne Cunningham would kill me. SRO tenants are a particularly vulnerable segment of the rent stabilized population, with many aging tenants like Anne relying on fixed income and a housing market without comparable housing. So I urge the Board to finalize this group of tenants as proposed 0 percent. Thank you very much for coming back from your break. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Let's just see, are there any questions? For the Borough President's Board? Nope?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Diane Stein, Caitlin Shan, and Daniela Day.
Thank you. My name is Diane Stein. I live in Independence Plaza, a former Mitchell Lama rental housing complex in Tribeca with approximately 1,300 units and 3,000 tenants. When the landlord took us out of the Mitchell Lama program in 2004 through an agreement with the landlord, we now have essentially three types of tenants: voucher, landlord assistance program, and market rate. The landlord assistance program, or LAP, mimics rent stabilization in that the rent increases basically follow the rent guidelines Board vote. Under the previous administration, the increases had been very high, and many LAP tenants had to move out because they could no longer afford the rent. The situation is becoming critical for many people who have been active in our community, people who'd helped create schools, parks, and small businesses. These people, the pioneers, who lived in the neighborhood since it was called Washington Market, who helped make it so desirable that it became prime real estate and was renamed Tribeca, these are the people who are being priced out of the neighborhood and out of the city. I mourn the loss of affordability and urge you to vote for a rent freeze or rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Shan.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Caitlin Shan. I'm a volunteer at Met Council on Housing and live in a rent stabilized apartment in Queens. By trade, I'm a marketing account director, and my expertise is in marketing pharmaceutical drugs to insurance companies. So I know a thing or two about dysfunctional marketplaces that produce and sell what should be a human right. The housing market is an economic parallel. Our government has determined that it should be left to the free market, but we know from literally hundreds of years of capitalist history that the free market will always fill the pockets of the rich, and we will always have to fight for the needs of those who have less. I can't imagine any of you up there would dispute this. So in the middle of the profit machine that is our housing market, we have rent stabilization. It's the only housing that is, in fact, affordable. It's the only housing that's actually attainable. No impossible lottery required. It's also our most effective tool in preventing homelessness. So the question today: Do landlords need an increase in annual rents? Let's talk about it. $975 million in MCIs in the last five years. Closed book IAIs that push apartments out of stabilization. I've seen it myself in my neighborhood. Vacancy bonuses, preferential rent gouges, J-51, 421A. This system of obscene profits is backed by an army of litigators and lobbyists, and it's all blessed by housing court judges and our local elected officials, like Mayor de Blasio, who personally appointed the three new members on the Board here today. Your data is crystal clear. Landlords do not need an increase. From 2014 to 2015, net operating income grew 10.8 percent. That's your numbers, the 11th year in a row of increases. Operating costs rose only 1.1 percent, and mortgage rates are at an all-time low. If you vote for anything other than the lowest possible increase, you either do not understand your own data or you are simply okay with personally being responsible for making people homeless. Do what the data says. Do what keeps people in their homes. You are morally obligated to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniela Day.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Daniela, and I'm a volunteer at the Met Council on Housing as well. I've lived on Elizabeth and Grant Streets most of my life. I've had my name on a lease, on a rent stabilized lease, for about 20 years. My family immigrated here at the end of the 20th century. Excuse me, the beginning of the 20th century. I run a nonprofit cultural institute, so I'm not a mathematician. It might be obvious at this point. Personally, I'll speak a little bit about my own situation. My organization, of which I'm the manager and not the director, will be closing for renovation expansion for at least a year in the spring of 2018. So I want to stay in my community as someone who runs the aforementioned cultural organization that educates tourists and the public and is a nonprofit-by-donation community space, and also places like the Met Council that I have easy access to as someone who needs their help and can also give back to others. My building has been sold approximately four times in the last 10 years to a predatory landlord who spent a year renovating the building, which was just renovated by the previous landlord a year before. They've spent the majority of the last year covering the outside of the brick with panels of wood and putting in lighting, lighting right next to my door that says my apartment number inside the apartment, which is already on my door, putting tons of lights all over the building that they never repair. They left an empty, which I've now figured out is a planter box for a year, that just filled up with garbage and chicken bones. I'm the only rent stabilized tenant. The rest of the tenants are market value or legal Airbnbs. I'm asking you for a rent rollback or no increase so I can stay in my community and contribute to it as I have continued to do so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jeff Alexander. Is Jeff Alexander here? No? All right. Zellnor Myrie or Meery?
Good evening. My name is Zellnor Myrie. And I am a rent stabilized tenant. Forty years ago, my mom moved to this country. She moved to Brooklyn on the promise from a friend that she could sleep on a mattress in her room and that she could have a job at a factory in Brooklyn. She was able to make it off that mattress when I was born and moved to Maple and Flatbush, where we have lived ever since. Moving to a rent stabilized apartment allowed my mom to put food on the table. It allowed her to be a business owner in our community. And even when the rents were raised for commercial properties on Flatbush, and my mom had to close down her store, she was able to get back on her feet because of the managed rent in our apartment. That apartment has allowed me to focus on my education. It allowed me to go to college. It allowed me to become the first lawyer in my family. And it's the reason why I came back after law school, because I wanted to be in the community that had given so much to me. And so I urge the Board to not look at these rent raises as just units or numbers, but these are really human lives. I would not be who I am today if I were not raised in that apartment. And I would urge the Board to do the right thing here. Sure, there are costs that have gone up, but as has been previously alluded to, homelessness is up, eviction rates are up, net income for the landlords are up. And, you know, that's happened for 11 consecutive years now. I think that the Board should do the right thing and not build profits on the backs of the people that build this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Let's see, is Jeff Alexander here? No. All right. We're awaiting further speakers. If there's anyone who wants to speak, could you please register at the registration desk? We'll be happy to hear from you. Good evening. Is this Ms. Yan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead with your testimony.
Okay.
Dear Judges, my name is Yan Yan Qing. I live in 125 Allen Street in Lower Manhattan.
Yeah.
I'm a member of the CAAV. I've been living in this address for a year. I'm the mother of two children. To better assist my children's education, so two-thirds of my personal income monthly goes to the rent for the better education for kids. So I spend a lot of money on monthly rent. But this is a very tiny, very aged apartment. But I have to do this because I don't want to share space with other people because I'm a mother of two children. So we need to get our own apartment without sharing with others. So the rest of my income, I have to save up. I have to be really careful with my monthly spending to make sure that I can survive in the city. So I urge you guys to have zero increase to my neighborhood to make sure that I have a smooth transition as a mother of two children. I'm a first-generation immigrant. So I'm trying really hard to improve my family situation, our income, our social status. But it is really hard because we are coming from a very low stage. So we have language barriers, we have the family issues, and I have children.
所以谢谢法官，希望你们可以支持我们，不要加租。Thank you.
So thank you, everybody. I wish you can support us to get this zero increase to get it approved. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peng Zhao.
Good evening, everyone. 我的名字是赵鹏
My name is Zhao Peng.
我住在127号Edred Street
I live in 127 Edred Street. I've been living in this address for a year and a six months. I spend over half of my income on my monthly rent. Just like the previous speaker, my living condition is not very ideal. Very high rent, very poor air condition, and a lot of rats and some cockroach in the apartment. So I have a really bad coughing, so it makes my personal health gets worse. So I'm a personal coach. So this bad condition affects my health, and it also affects my job and career. So even in this bad condition, my landlord are still trying to increase the rent and kicking us out from the apartment. Because of that, I think the only thing we can do is the rent control, is we are seeking the political solutions to fight with the landlord. That's the only solution we have at this point. Even with the existing policies, the landlords are still able to getting the new tenants by kicking out the current tenants out.
MCI?
Yeah.
It can also go through the MCI to increase the rent. So we still urge you to protect us because this is really the last line of our living. We're living in a hard condition, not because we're lazy nor any other reasons, because it's the landlords, they are greedy and they're irresponsible. So we voice ourselves in this particular stage because we want to live with dignity. And this is really the most basic human needs. This is my personal demand. And I urge you to not increase the rent and not let this bell pass. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Way.
Hi, my name's Wang Yichun. I'm the organizer of CAAV. So today, I represent all the members of CAAV and all the lower-income residents in Chinatown. MCI
就说
对，重新说
Okay.
你先说前面那部分
Okay.
分开
分开两种，对
对，用英文
Okay. So I want to speak for a moment on the proposal from the tenant representatives on separating landlords that use MCI improvements to increase the rent and landlords that don't. In Chinatown, we see that not only do tenants have a lot of rent burden, especially in families with multiple generations, but also we're seeing a lot of construction as harassment due to the gentrification pressures and real estate prices in the area. And the result of that is tenants face the double insult, essentially, of living through really horrid, unsafe construction, and then a year later, or six months later, facing an MCI increase due to that construction. Most recently, I've seen an increase up to $105 with a pending application of another $50, right? And for tenants whose current rents are between $500 and $1,000 and whose incomes, of which that might represent somewhere between 50 percent and 75 percent of their incomes, it's really an untenable situation. So we'd like to strongly push you all to consider this proposal of separating those landlords.
We have a question.
Yeah.
So, thank you for your testimony. Just on that question, do you think it would be confusing for tenants to not have one citywide standard for a lease increase but have the legal lease increase differ from building to building?
I think a lot of things about housing in New York City are already confusing. And, you know, I'm not saying that those things aren't difficult to navigate for the tenants that we work with, but folks manage to navigate those things. I think, honestly, a lot of folks are not entirely familiar with the rent guidelines Board process. I'd say most people, even though they recognize that they have these increases that are standardized from year to year. So at least amongst the population that we work with in Chinatown, I can't see that that would be a major problem or change for people.
Thank you.
We have another question.
I don't ever think this works. So I have a question around who makes up your membership and what does your work actually look like? And so from my understanding, a lot of the buildings that you guys work with, there are not that many rent stabilized tenants left in them. And if they are, what is the actual economic situation of those tenants? And what are they facing around, like harassment and other pressures for them to move out and no longer live in these units? And what does that actually look like in Chinatown in general?
So our organization works with rent-regulated tenants in Chinatown. The vast majority of our folks are living in tenement buildings of around 16 to 20 units. Working-class families ranging from recent immigrants living in the area for a couple of years to people who've been in their buildings, their apartments, for 40 to 50 years. And I think it's definitely true. I can think of a number of buildings where, for example, there originally 20 units and then we're down to six individuals or four individuals who are living in those buildings, right? And that's because of the buyout pressure, the construction as harassment tactics, and the general stress tenants have experienced with landlords moving into the neighborhood who have incentives, essentially, to renovate buildings, push rent stabilized tenants out, and find ways, illegal and legal, to jack up rents until things are in the arena of $3,000 for a two-bedroom apartment. So there are very strong pressures of that type in Chinatown.
And when you said that there is four to six And when you said that there is four to six people left, do you mean in the whole building or do you mean rent stabilized units?
Uh, I'm thinking of a particular example in which there, I believe, the Forsyth Street buildings, are they sixteen units? Sixteen units, there's four left in one building and six left in the other building, right? Uh, I can think of another building on Madison Street that originally had twelve units and they are down to three individuals. Um, and the, the building, it's twin building across the street in which there are eight units and the landlord is currently, has already evicted one person, is pursuing, um, is pursuing eviction litigation against all seven remaining units in the building. Um, these are all predatory equity landlords in, in Chinatown, uh, so, uh, large firms that are systematically buying up portfolios in the neighborhood, um, and uh, pursue, heavily pursuing M C Is, heavily, heavily pursuing construction and M C Is, um, and then, uh, also offering buyouts and generally applying a very, like, systematic, uh, pressure to, to move rent regulated tenants out, illegal and, and legal means.
We have another question
Yeah
And where, where's your sense, where do people go when they're, um, pushed out of Chinatown?
Honestly, I've heard people saying that they will, um, return to the country of their origin, uh, so that's the most drastic. Uh, but, um, outside of that, you know, I think, uh, a lot of folks try very difficult, uh, try very hard to stay, stay in Chinatown even in difficult circumstances because, um, for, for, um, Chinese immigrants, particularly those who speak primarily Chinese dialects, the neighborhood offers a kind of community that they simply cannot have access to, um, uh, anywhere else, right? And if folks move out, they're often commuting an hour or an hour and a half back to go to their senior center or, or go, um, see people that they care about or access certain cultural or social services. Uh, I think organizationally, we don't have a strong sense necessarily of where people move because we don't keep track of, um, we don't keep statistics on that. Um, but I can say that it is really, really crucial, uh, for folks to stay in the neighborhood for reasons that go far beyond just, you know, they like their apartment or it's convenient, right? For, for, um, Chinese speaking immigrants, Chinatown is a social and cultural resource, uh, that is really unparalleled.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, uh, three speakers are Susie Schrop, Tyler Rocky, and Jill Rappaport.
Um, good afternoon, dear members of the Rent Guidelines Board and fellow tenants, I'm Susie Schrop from the East Village, I'm a Shalom tenant, and despite years of harassment, have managed to hold on to our rent stabilized apartment. This is my fifteenth year before the R G B. Within two years of ownership, my landlord deregulated nineteen out of twenty units. They own over one hundred buildings in Manhattan alone and all display similar, uh, ratios of deregulation. My landlord's income has increased by three hundred and fifty percent in the first two years of ownership and has grown greatly over the years. The current tenants are students who are not contributing members to community, nor do any of them pay New York taxes. I believe the R G B has contributed to the mass deregulation of rent regulated housing by granting high in, high increases over the last years. The rent freeze from last year has been a desperate needed slowdown in tenants' race to the bottom. Ninety percent of owners do exceptionally well. However, times are such where the handful of allegedly struggling owners have to, have to stop relying on low to moderate income tenants to subsidize their income. The R G B must divert this huge financial burden and sacrifice away from tenants. The handful of owners struggling, um, for the handful of owners struggling, no increase is high enough um, for the life, in comfort and security they seek. We are in one of the worst affordable housing crises since the seventies, no improvement is in sight. The R G B must tell those owners to make use of the hardship tool available to them via the D H C R. I am currently paying eighty-five percent of my income in rent, I know it sounds unbelievable, but I'm willing to open my books. Um, for tenants like me, every increase means the ability to keep a roof over my head is slipping away. I really, really need a substantial rent rollback or at least a rent, uh, freeze. And as always, thank, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Tyler Rocky.
Thank you, um
Good evening
Thanks. You guys have heard from a lot of tenants already that have spoken more powerfully than I could about the negative effects of a rent increase. Um, so I have a short process point I'd like to bring up. You guys know the numbers better than I do, I think there's about two point five million people that live in these, um, rent stabilized units. And, um, it's worth asking ourselves seriously, to the extent that this is supposed to be a participatory process, um, whether our outreach efforts have been effective, um, given the fact that, you know, thank you guys for coming, um, but, you know, there's twenty-five of us here or so, and I realize there's been people shuffling in and out throughout the day, but, you know, if, I think my basic math skills, you fill Yankee Stadium about fifty times, right, with the number of people that live in these buildings. And if, you know, to the extent that your decisions are at all dependent upon hearing from these people, I hope you don't anticipate the absence of these tenants as complacency about the state of things. Um, I would suggest it's more likely the result of either, uh, not having time to come to these delightful events, not understanding that they can have a, a voice, uh, or just, generally folks being busy. So again, to the extent that two point five million people's testimony would influence your decision at all, I would just encourage you to think that those folks would probably tell similar stories were they able to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Rappaport.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, I wasn't expecting to testify tonight, but I see that, uh, there's the low turnout and I, I actually want to second what the previous speaker said. I, I also think that there should be more outreach so that, so, because it is undeniable that tenants, you know, are working two and three jobs in order to pay the rent and, uh, probably cannot make it to these hearings when it is their vital interests that are at stake. Um, I've lived many years as a rent stabilized tenant, but I am, I have not been a rent stabilized tenant for the past seven years. I've lived in Penn South, which is, uh, affordable co-op housing, and that has been a blessing, and there should be many more of them. But I continue to come to these hearings every year because I still remember the injustices, not necessarily to me, but to many people I know and to the city at large. And I'm gonna quote someone that I truly detest, and that's Donald Trump, and when he said, "We can't have a country like this, you need a country." "We need a city, and the city needs to be affordable for people, people need to be able to live here." "They cannot continue to cram eight, twelve, fifteen people into apartments because they can't afford better, and how far out from the center can they really be expected to go?" While rich people and ultra-rich people and uber-rich people are filling apartments, are, are, are actually the opposite, they are not present in their apartments because they're simply investment properties. And that is a factor of the economics of real estate in New York, and it is a scandal and an abomination. And it really should be, should be looked at very closely by you guys and ended. It's completely wrong, and it will destroy New York, and it's already done a lot of that already. And many of the people who I, who I see in my neighborhood, which is Chelsea, there are, there is just a surfeit of homeless people, there are more all the time. They are lining the, the alleyways of Penn Station, they are all over the streets, you see them on Upper Broadway leaning against buildings. This was never the case before, and I'm not that old, but I do remember when it was not like that, even though there have always been homeless. That is because they're being driven out of their homes by developers and ultra-rich property owners, I'm not talking about small landlords, thank you.
Thank you. We are awaiting further speakers, if you would like to speak, um, please be sure to sign up at the registration desk, we'll be happy to hear your testimony.
Kathy, could I just say one thing related to the hearing?
Yes
Uh, you know, this is the fourth or fifth hearings, um, and I think one maybe consequence of having more hearings in more boroughs is that individual hearings are not as crowded. So I don't think anybody is assuming that nobody cares about rent regulation because this hearing happens to be less crowded. We've hea- heard from hundreds of tenants and, and many landlords in other hearings, so. We're, we're here to hear, but we're not, we're not making any inferences from this particular moment.
I didn't quite understand that nobody cares, that's if they probably can't make it
Okay. Uh, Zheng Ziqing.
Hello,大家好
Uh, good evening.
Hi, I was住在，呃，
你的名字叫什么？
啊
你的名字重复一下
郑志清
Uh, hi everybody, my name is Zheng Ziqing, uh, I've been living in, uh,
离市街还是狄兰市街
I've been living in Sixteenth Avenue Street for over thirty years. I've been doing this kind of thing for over ten years, every year I have participated in this, uh, kind of event. Uh, so things we have been doing this, uh, in the past few years, uh, are pretty much the similar things. A lot of harassments are, uh, generating, uh, are coming from the landlords, and, uh, they are kicking people out, uh, they're kicking the tenants out. Um, so a lot of dramas going on in this, this area, and, um, these things are getting worse in, in the past two year, uh, in the past few years. Uh, so for years, the landlords have been harassing us and kicking us out. Uh, I'm glad we have Cav as the association, as the association to assist us, to get us, uh, politically informed so that we know what their, where, what we are, our rights are and how we fight for it.
And also the tactics that the landlords have been using have been getting worse and worse. It used to be only thirty thousand, thirty thousand for a buyout, now they're willing to offer even more money. And instead of it being a small landlord, it's now big corporations and big developers.
就是除了我自己经历，我看到我是C A里面的，呃，
Uh, besides my personal experience, uh, and a lot of my neighbors in the buildings, they have been experiencing the even worse cases, so now I'm gonna raise two examples that I have seen, uh, in my, in my real, uh, in my personal life.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the first case I'm gonna raise is, uh, something that I've seen in my neighborhood. Uh, there, there's this landlord is trying to kicking the, the current tenants out, they're just, uh, you know, putting the bad air and just, just produce bad air in a, in apartments so that, to make the, the, the current tenants like coughing and make their get sick to like, make it like intolerable for the current tenants. Uh, it's, uh, things are getting, uh, worse. So the
我真的很难过
The landlord was pretty straightforward, he was basically saying that, uh, "I'm just doing this, I'm just kicking you out, I don't care." And the current, uh, the, the previous tenant was, uh, eventually kicked out by this, uh, person, and, uh, I feel really sad about this.
你刚才说回来，就是他打了三一一，就家庭压力
Yeah, um, basically, we were doing outreach in a building at a hundred Forsyth, and there's a tenant who is originally gonna come to the initial R G B hearing, um, and because he's been calling three one one because his landlord hasn't been very responsive in getting repairs done, it, his family, his son then started yelling at him and saying, "Why are you calling three one one? Now you're, you're gonna get kicked out of the apartment because you're now, you're, you're seen as a nuisance to, to the landlord." So because of that, he has very little morale and he doesn't even wanna come, um, to the hearing, like, for, for something that, calling three one one. Whereas like, if the landlords were doing their jobs and being responsible, the tenants wouldn't have to call three one one in the first place.
So in the cases like this, uh, we are living in hardship in the Chinatown area. So right now, there are a lot of cooperates, a lot of cooperates are controlling the Chinatown area, they have more than ten or twenty year apartments, uh, um, in their hands so that, uh, their strategy is basically kicking out the current tenants and rate the rent.